Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is 5:33 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present. We want to welcome Assistant City Manager Oscar Garcia on this meeting, and he is going to be here in place of Gabe Gabriel Gonzalez, who is not here today. So if everyone will please join me as Commissioner Mike Mesmer leads us in the invocation.
I will read Psalm 3. "Lord, why are they multiplied that afflict me? Many rise up against me; many say of my soul, 'There is no salvation for him in God.' But Thou, O Lord, art my helper, my glory and lifter up my head. I cried unto the Lord with my voice, and he heard me out of his holy mountain. I laid me down and slept; I awoke, for the Lord will help me. I will not be afraid of tens of thousands of people that set themselves against round about me. Arise, O Lord, save me, O my God, for you have smitten all who without cause were my enemies, and you have broken the teeth of sinners. Salvation belongs to the Lord, and your blessing is upon the people. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, now and ever, and to the ages of ages. Amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Glory to thee."
And the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item 3, announcements. With respect to the items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's announcement. Mayor, would you have anything to announce?
I just want to take a minute to recognize city staff. They're, you know, it is Christmas time, and there's a lot of events going around the city, and it takes a village to get everything done. And so I want to commend Downtown, Downtown Director Alexis, and everyone that participated. And I know that Commissioner Lopez helped with some of the setup and worked the parade, and I wanted to just say that, you know, did a great job. It's so hard with Mother Nature and knowing whether we're going to be able to move forward or not. And so knowing that all of you are putting in your hard work means the world to the community, I'm sure, because these are events that we expect year after year, and they just get better year after year. In addition to that, I know Javier Saúrra at the Harlingen Convention Center also put on the annual, or the third annual lighting of the Christmas tree, and that in itself is also a huge task. And I was able to see all the wonderful little boys and girls excited with all of the gifts that they were able to leave with, both gifts and gifts for their bellies. So that was nice as well. I also want to congratulate our city commissioners. I know that the results are official, I think, in a few days, but they've been, the elections were called, and so I want to congratulate the entire commission, the incumbents, for their hard-fought races, and that we can continue to move the city of Harlingen forward. And that is all I have for now.
Item 3B, City Manager's announcements. Mr. Garcia, do you have anything to announce?
None.
Okay. Item 3C, City Commission Member announcements. Commissioners, anything to announce?
In addition to everything that the mayor pointed out, I'd also like to compliment city staff. Everybody that had anything to do with the Employee Appreciation Dinner that took place Saturday evening, it was a great event, recognized a lot of great people who devoted many years to keeping this city running. So well done to all of them, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Again, I want to congratulate all the staff for all the hard work they've done, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Please recognize that during the holiday season, it's a great time to have fun and enjoy your time with family, but please be safe on the roads. Please use Ubers or Lifts or designated drivers. Unfortunately, this time of year, there are a lot of avoidable accidents. Another PD can testify to that. So please be safe and have a fantastic holiday season.
Keeping with the Christmas season, for us people who grew up on the old calendar and still live on the old calendar, tomorrow is St. Nicholas Day.
I'd just like to thank every, all the city staff, top to bottom. Also would like to say Merry Christmas y Feliz Navidad y Prospero Año Nuevo for everybody within District 4, City of Harlingen, and throughout our county and nation. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all the people that went out there and all the districts that went out there and voted during the runoff. I know, you know, saw a lot of people had election fatigue and they didn't want to go and vote, but yet we still have people that go out and vote. So all of you that went out there and voted, thank you very much. And just to echo Frank, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay, moving on to item 4, proclamation presentation of awards. For A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, we have brought with us AJ. He is about two years old. He is a terrier mix. We think he may have some Las Oaxos in him or different things. He is a bundle of joy. He's been at the back of the room, just playing, having a great old time. He's about two years old. He's housebroken. He's current on his vaccines, and he will be neutered soon. And he is available for adoption, along with many other animals, at the Harlingen Animal Shelter located at 1106 Markowski. If anybody has any questions or would like to see AJ or any of the other animals, they are welcome to go by or call 956-216-5250.
Oh, my goodness. He's having a grand old time. So potential adopters, be prepared for lots of energy and fun.
Yes, yes. He's a ball of fun.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Item 4B, Mayor's Business of the Month, Johnny's True Hardware. Johnny's True Value Hardware.
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, every month, we prepare a Mayor's Business of the Month, and so we have a video prepared for you before I introduce the owner to say a few words.
I'm James Hess, and I'm the owner, along with my father and my mother, of Johnny's True Value in Harlingen. You know, Johnny's True Value is a family-owned business that we try to be your first stop for hardware, housewares, sporting goods, fishing, guns, ammunition, trinkets. We've been here a long time, and we want to create memories for your family and memories of the cool stuff that you find at Johnny's. You know, I've always thought it was amazing, the different combinations of your shopping cart, and where else are you gonna, you know, you're gonna come in for some insecticide, rat trap, get yourself a chef's hat, and go pick up some 9-millimeter ammunition. Where else are you gonna do that? It's neat to see all the different combinations of things you can get here. We're at 914 West Tyler Avenue in Harlingen. We've got entrances on both sides of the store, and we're here for you when you're
Mr. Hess, if you'd like to come up to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you for having me. I was so worried about that video. I wanted to thank Brandon, and he did a really good job. Thanks for the recognition for this award. You know, we've been here for many decades, and Harlingen's always been home to not only the business, but my family. And we plan on being here for a long, long, long time, and I really appreciate this honor. And my daughter being here with me makes me excited, and thanks for having us.
May I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, I've been married for 50 years, and my wife has made me walk through Hobby Lobby in more times than I can count, and Target. Johnny's True Value is my payback store.
Yeah. We've got stuff for her, too.
I don't care.
I love it.
Great place, great place.
I was just there Friday.
I see you all the time. Thank you.
Your store's phenomenal. I bought my first gun there, bought my first Yeti there. You guys are like, have taken a lot of money, but I love it, and I will continue to be a big fan of y'all.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you and your family so much, and we wanted to honor you and just show you how much we appreciate you. And it's music to my ears that you say that you're going to be here for many years to come. Know that the community supports you, this commission supports you, and we're here to support you in anything that you need moving forward. And obviously, everybody's going to continue to shop there.
Yes.
But anything that you need, please know that you have a partner in us. We are incredibly blessed to have families like yours, that, you know, you're really an institution here in Harlingen. Everybody knows Johnny's True Value. So thank you, thank you for all you do, and we'd love to take a photo with you.
Sure.
And your family, of course. I haven't been married for 50 years, probably half of that, but I'm also married to a guy that likes to fish and hunt and all that manly stuff. And so like these two gentlemen here, you've taken a lot from my family, too. But we love you, so thank you so much for being here. All right, moving on to Citizen Communication. Do we have anyone signed up, Amanda?
Yes, we do. We have Ms. Elaine. I don't see her. Oh, this one is Ron Lozano.
Good evening, District 3. I hope, Mr. Hess, that your dad remains in good health. Probably speaking to the only person that has ever been able to inject something other than like clear and convincing, beyond a reasonable doubt. Texas recently had such a new measure, and I never, I never thought it would happen in my lifetime. And tomorrow, he's going to argue something extremely important to one of the Assistant City Managers, religion. So what I came to say prior, Mr. Hess has been in ill health, as you all know, is that the fat lady hasn't sung yet. And thank God, in this world, there's still ladies, like one on that podium right now. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
I think we have Elaine Flores.
Okay, Ms. Flores.
Good evening, Commission, Mayor, and congratulations, coming back. Obviously, the city knows that this is a great dream, and here we are again for another term. The reason I'm here is I want to bring up a couple of things. As you all are aware of, Don Gallette Restaurant, of which Fred, Rodiva, one of the owners, she's here with me today, was broken into yesterday morning, approximately around 6:30 in the morning, which is in broad daylight. And the concern on that was the fact that, and this is going to lead into something else, is the fact that some of our neighbors around us were very much aware of the break-in. The report didn't come in because it was a day that we were closed on Mondays and Tuesdays, and this happened on a Tuesday. The call didn't come in to Ms. Rodiva and Mr. Silva until approximately around 11 o'clock, and only because one of our devoted clients came in for breakfast, she and her husband, not realizing that it was Tuesday and that it was closed. So she goes elsewhere to inform them, I don't want to say any names, elsewhere to inform them, hey, there's been a break-in next door. They said, oh, yes, we are aware of it, as a matter of fact, and ironically, it was a homeless lady that brought it to their attention also. Besides hearing the glass breaking, also she noticed it and reported it. It was the client that called the PD, and they responded immediately and attended to the situation, which is, I believe, that's why the call came in to Fred. My concern is that, not so much the break-in, because this is the fourth break-in, okay? And you kind of, we've gotten used to it, and we know how to take care of it. But the concern here is the fact that we, as a community, and not just as a local community, but statewide and nationwide, we have become so nonchalant about things, and we've come into this mentality of, I don't want to get involved. I see, I hear, but I don't want to get involved. Not my concern, it's not my business.
Mayor, the three minutes are up.
Okay, well, it's... That was three minutes? Okay.
That's okay. You can continue.
Okay, thank you. My concern is this, and this is where I come in as, again, Crime Stoppers. I know PD is doing as much as they can with what they have at hand, and the Crime Stoppers is an organization that can assist the PD in extremely valuable manner. I am asking you all to please, please promote Crime Stoppers on your posts, on your, whatever you're doing via media. We used to have an RPD cars, the tip-top line. If there's a way we can get those decals back on the, on the police cars, we would really appreciate that much, that very much also. And that comes also now into, you all have some handouts that I brought in earlier. Those are homeless people that are living across the business from the restaurant and next to Jaime Rodriguez's business, and the landlord of that business, I don't know if he or she is aware of it, but these people are living there. But the main concern on that one also is, if you'll notice, there's some fresh, where they started fires to keep warm at night, especially the way the weather's been, some days cool, some days a little cooler, what have you. The concern is that when we were taking the pictures, or rather, when Fred was taking the pictures, the fire was still very fresh. The smoke was still coming out. So the concern is this, what happens if that fire gets out of control, especially at night? There goes a city block, and maybe a little bit more, and maybe some lives. I know, and I've been made aware right before the meeting, that you all are in the process of doing a project or survey, something, to obtain some more information on the homeless situation. And I could go on with some, couple of other things, but I appreciate you letting me take a few more minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. And I do have contact information, so I'll get with both of you after, and maybe Daniel and I can, we can sit down and see what we can do to alleviate some of the issues that you're having and tell you about our long-term plans. Thank you both. All right, moving on.
Item 6, Approval of Minutes. Item 6A, Regular Meeting of November 6, 2024. And Item 6B, Special Meeting of November 14, 2024.
Are there any amendments to the minutes?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion through, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to item 7, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business, were included in the budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Are there any items to be removed? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Mayor, we have no city manager reports to disclose or staff reports to be disclosed.
Okay, moving on.
Okay. Item 9, Public Hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. There were no citizen communication, public hearings to be addressed, Mayor.
Okay, so let me get, go through these really quick. Item 9A, Public Hearing for a Rezoning Request from Residential Single Family District to Residential Duplex District for a Property Located at 318 South New Hampshire Street, Bearing Illegal Description of Lot 1, Block 3, South New Hampshire Subdivision. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing. Item 9B, Public Hearing for a Rezoning Request from Non Designated District to Plan Development District 4-1 Commercial Lot and 15 Duplex Lots out of Lot 1, Block 2, Georgette Subdivision, Located at the southwest corner of Ted Johnson Lane and Bass Boulevard. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will close the public hearing. Item 9C, Public Hearing for a Special Use Permit to Allow an Adult Business Smoke Shop in a General Retail District Located at 910 Morgan Boulevard, Suite B, Bearing Illegal Description of Lots 8, 9, 10, 11, Rio Land Subdivision. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing. Item 9D, Public Hearing for a Special Use Permit to Allow a Storage Building Greater Than 144 Square Feet in a Residential Single Family District Located at 1505 Thacker Lane, Bearing Illegal Description of Lots 14 and 15, Block 3, Oak Ranch Estate, Subdivision Phase 3. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. 9E, Public Hearing for a Special Use Permit to Allow an Unmanned Battery Storage Facility in Light Industry District Located at 1335 Memphis Street, Bearing Legal Description of the East 6.604 Acres out of Block 3, Paul Hill Subdivision. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Moving on.
Moving on to item 10, Action Items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Rezoning Request from Residential Single Family District to Residential Duplex District for a Property Located at 318 South New Hampshire Street, Bearing Legal Description of Lot 1, Block 3, South New Hampshire Subdivision, Applicant Juan Ruiz, Planning and Development.
Mark?
In order to submitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for a property located at 318 South New Hampshire Street, and bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 3, South New Hampshire Subdivision.
Before we get started, I just want to, I've been getting some messages that apparently the volume on the YouTube videos isn't working, so I was wondering if somebody could check on that. They're not getting any volume at home.
Calista's going back.
Huh?
Calista, can you go and talk to the guys in the back and tell them that the...
We're not able to connect, so they're going to post a notice right now. We're going to load up the meeting after.
Okay, we're not connecting? Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Some technical difficulties, but the, seems like the meeting will be available after. It'll be uploaded to the channel. Okay.
Yes.
There was no opposition here, correct? Was there any questions, or do you, does anyone need the presentation?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance for a Rezoning Request from Non Designated District to Plan Development District for 1 Commercial Lot and 15 Duplex Lots of Lot 1 out of Lots Block 1, Block 2, Georgette Subdivision, Located at the southwest corner of Ted Johnson Lane and Bass Boulevard, Georgina Gonzalez, Planning and Development.
In order to submitting the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen, to rezone from non-designated N District to Plan Development PD District to allow 15 duplex lots in 1 commercial lot out of Lot 1, Block 2, Georgette Subdivision, Located on the northwest corner of Bass Boulevard and Johnson Lane, Providing for Publication and Ordaining Other Matters Related to the Foregoing.
I think this is one of the ones that we annexed recently into the city that we had noticed. Is there any specific questions, or does anyone need the presentation? Gentlemen?
Yeah? Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit to Allow an Adult Business Smoke Shop in a General Retail District Located at 910 Morgan Boulevard, Suite B, Bearing Legal Description of Lots 8, 9, 10, 11, Rio Land Subdivision, Applicant Anthony Aguilar, Planning and Development.
In order to submitting the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit to allow adult business in a general retail GR district located at 910 Morgan Boulevard, Suite B, Bearing Legal Description of Lots 8, 9, 10, 11, Rio Land Subdivision.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt...
I apologize. Before we move on, could you give me a map, or give this commission a map at our next meeting? If we were to apply the same regulations for the car washes to smoke shops, could you give me a map of that?
Yeah, with the circles, the two mild circles?
Yes, sir.
We can do that.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
That's okay, sir, no problem. Item 10D, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit to Allow a Storage Building Greater Than 144 Square Feet in a Residential Single Family District Located at 1505 Thacker Lane, Bearing Legal Description of Lots 14 and 15, Block 3, Oak Ranch Estate, Subdivision, Phase 3, Applicant John Louis Castillo, Planning and Development.
In order to submitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to John Louis Castillo to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a residential single-family R1 district located at 1505 Thacker Lane, Bearing Legal Description of Lots 14 and 15, Block 3, Oak Ranch Estates, Phase 2, Subdivision, Providing for Publication and Ordaining Other Matters Related to the Foregoing.
Question, will there be plumbing? Will there be bathrooms?
No, it's just a garage for the, for the vehicles and things.
Sounds familiar?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10E, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit to Allow an Unmanned Battery Storage Facility in a Light Industry District Located at 1335 Memphis Street, Bearing Legal Description of the East 6.604 Acres out of Block 3, Paul Hill Subdivision, Applicant Raven Vault, Inc., Planning and Development.
In order to submitting the code of ordinances of the city Harlingen, ordinance number 16-8 to issue a special use permit to Raven Vault... 16-8 to issue a special use permit to Ravenbolt LLC to allow a battery storage energy facility in the light industry LI district located at 1335 Memphis Street, bearing a legal description of the east 6.6040 acres at a block three, Paul Hill subdivision, subject to one of the conditions outlined in the body of the ordinance.
On this one, I noticed that when I was reading through the minutes for the P&amp;Z meeting, Nick Conceilio made a point that, I guess, the last battery facilities only brought in $315 in property taxes?
No, that, that is not correct.
Not correct? Did I read that, or not correct? The dollar, no?
No, the, so I did some research on that. Uh, the first project that was approved is operational on Tucker Road, and the building permit valuation was 3.5 million. The appraisal district put a 2.5 million valuation on the project. Their, their tax bill that is due January of next month, they're gonna have to pay $13,589 in property taxes to the city of Harlingen.
And that's the one off of Tucker, correct?
That's the only one that has been approved that has, was constructed and is operational. We have two more, um...
One on Lincoln, right?
This is number four, right?
This is project number five. This is project number five.
Yeah, we have two.
So the ones on the east side, the two blue, which is, one of them is on Harrison, the other one on Loop 499, those will be under construction, will, will be under construction very soon. And then the other one that was approved on Lincoln, we haven't heard from them, so that project may fall through. And then the one on green is the, is the brand new one.
On this one, we also had a number of constituents calling with concerns. Different from the other ones.
Yes, we had two phone calls, uh, in opposition, they did not show up to the planning and zoning meeting, but one of them had concerns about a leak, what happens if there's a leak. Uh, and then the other one had concerns about property taxes, what's gonna happen to their taxes with this project.
And this is, to the best of my recollection, the one that's closest to a neighborhood, because it's essentially in the backyard.
The, the first one had residences nearby, but this one has a dense neighborhood right next to it, yes. So it's different from the other projects.
And the only way to get through it is through, uh...
Memphis.
Memphis. And that road, is that road built to handle all the heavy traffic? Because it's gonna use, uh, cement trucks, we're gonna be using semis, we're gonna be using all that to build this up. Is that road built to handle that road?
They're, they're residential streets, uh, so they could potentially be damaged from the construction of the project.
Potentially or likely?
It's hard to tell, yeah.
I think we should know before, before moving, moving forward. I, like Daniel, I looked at the minutes and it was a little concerning, um, more than anything, close the proximity to the, to the neighbors, um, and valid concerns, and then the other, um, the, the tax that was collected was something, I think that what was presented to us, which was much more than even 13,000, it was something, I, I don't remember, I'd have to look at my notes from that meeting, but, um, when we're looking at these to see what is the real value, right? Because there's no jobs created since it's, no one's manning it, um, and if the investment is what, you know, they're presenting to us, and then the appraisal district, it's about a million less, is what you're saying? I don't know how that figure...
Now, this project is gonna be larger than the one on Tucker. So there's, what the applicants are saying is gonna be an 8.7 million, uh, investment, uh, in, in the project.
And looking at the map, this is just adjacent to the AEP electrical substation, which would be ideal to put this in there.
Yeah, that, yes, that's why they wanna locate this, this project there.
Do we know of any plans that they wanna do, either them or the business property owner, for that ice house?
No.
Do they already own the property?
No, I, I, I'm not sure if it's a, a long-term, they're proposing a long-term lease or purchasing a, a portion of the property. But the applicants are here in case, if you have questions on those specifics.
Yeah, I have a question. Will there be a fence, uh, six-foot, eight-foot, 10-foot-high fence from the, uh, homes to the, uh, project?
Is, is one of the conditions in the, in your list of conditions? That's one of the conditions, an eight-foot solid wall.
Okay.
Oscar, this street, if it is damaged, how much would it cost to repair the street because of the construction?
We, we need to go measure it and, and, and then I can come back with an accurate number.
Because if the taxes aren't even gonna cover, and then going back to the mayor's question, I hadn't thought about that. Do you know, do you recall how much we projected the first one was gonna make compared to how much it is now?
The, the very first one, we did not get property tax, uh, projections, so that came in in the second one, I think.
How long, excuse me, how long have those streets been, been, uh, on Memphis? When was the last time those streets that led through this property, excuse me, been in place?
This is, uh, this is a, a very old neighborhood, so this is probably a neighborhood from the 50s or 60s.
So that's how long the streets have been there?
Yes.
And the i, the ice house itself?
That was probably there before, before the neighborhood, very old.
Was the railroad tracks there when the ice house was in operation?
Yes, most likely, yes.
So everything went via rail way back when?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, back in the day when we had summer and winter farming, there was no reefer trucks, refrigerated trucks, uh, or, uh, rail cars, so we had ice houses. You packed the rail car with ice, and you packed it with your fruits and vegetable, and up north it went. And ice houses then became archaic once refrigerated, refrigerated or freezing trucks and rail cars came into being.
I'd like to make a motion to table this to give Oscar enough time to look at, uh, the cost that this is gonna, cost the city, especially on the road.
I think that's a good idea, um, but before we do, I know the applicants are here, and they probably took time out of their day to be here, so I wanna give them an opportunity if they have want anything to share with the commission, if you'd like. Um, it, you, no obligation, but we wanna give you that opportunity.
My name is Wesley. I'm on behalf of the battery manufacturer, as well as representing in part the owner. Yeah, we've, uh, very excited about, you know, becoming a part of, you know, the community and, uh, you know, making an investment here in Harlingen. We understand the concerns that have been laid out, ready to leaks, certainly, um, we would not make this kind of investment if there was, you know, a leak that would ever go undetected or that the, uh, equipment would not, um, you know, would allow for that as far as safety and concerns. The, um, as far as the concern raised today, certainly a valid one, you know, some of this equipment is heavy. So I, I know that certainly the, uh, responsibility would be that if there's, you know, something that is, um, not in place or that is put out of place by the work being done, um, it would be, you know, of our interest to, you know, take responsibility for it or to, um, you know, mediate that in some way. So that's certainly the, the intent. And with me is the EPC contractor, uh, Ravenbolt, who filed the application.
Yeah, Matt Alvarez from Ravenbolt, uh, we're gonna be the ones building, engineering it. We actually have multiple, multiple of these battery storage in Texas, so if there's any concern about the quality or anything, I know the road, I think, was it kinda covered that? We'd be happy to take you to a site, uh, show you the quality of our work and, you know, how, how we deal with that. We'd also bring our engineers in, we have them on the phone right now, so if you have any engineering questions, we could, uh, give them a call, sit in a room, just kinda waiting.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. I, I didn't have any specific questions, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to speak since you, you were here. We appreciate your presence, uh, I don't know if the commission has any specific questions.
Yeah, I have questions. Leak, what would leak, or what could leak?
Well, I mean, the concern was the concern, so, um, there's really very little potential for leaking. There is a, a liquid coolant. Uh, ethylene, the coolant is ethylene glycol, it's something that...
Yeah, yeah.
But it's non-toxic, the coolant itself. So there's really, uh, yeah.
Right, right, it's like your radiator fluid.
Correct.
Yeah, which, which I think is propy, propy, uh, propylene glycol.
Yes.
Yes, and this would be ethylene glycol.
Yes.
I'm a geek, I understand.
Good, we're in good company.
Have you guys at your other sites done, uh, road maintenance agreements?
I'm sorry, say it again.
At your other sites, have you done road maintenance agreements?
Road maintenance agreement, I'd have to check.
Yeah, yeah, and then my other question is, is you're bringing in cranes, you're bringing in heavy equipment, these batteries are heavy, it'll tear up a residential road, would you be willing to repave it?
I, I, I think the answer is...
You have to go back upstairs and ask that question, but...
Sure.
If you would be real, willing to repave that road, I'd be more than happy.
Any other questions?
I ask the same question every time one of these comes up, but what, what is, once it's established, how often does a human being come in, walk around, kick the tires, make sure everything's doing what it's supposed to be doing? I mean, is there the alarm systems and so on? I mean, is, is there an actual human that checks and occasionally?
Yeah, someone, someone will come on and do maintenance, probably monthly or, but not, not, they're not coming down there often. Most of this is done remotely.
Right.
And to the earlier concern mentioned, you know, certainly with an investment of this kind of type, we'll have, uh, security, you know, closed circuit TV to monitor the site, and, um, and certainly everything else is, uh, has many sensors and alarms to alert us of anything that's of a concern. We, as a battery OEM or manufacturer, have about, globally installed a lot of this product, and we've had zero what's known as thermal runaway or incidents of fire, that's zero. So we have a lot of confidence that it's a safe product to install here in Harlingen.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sold on the project if you repaved the road.
I'm gonna, uh, reassert my motion to table. Mark, at the county, when we have like the, the wind turbines come in, we do road maintenance agreements. Uh, I don't know if you are familiar, can you draft one up?
We're done with four, we certainly can.
Perfect, and that would alleviate, uh, some of our concerns here, and then, uh, sorry, Oscar, I was gonna say Gabe, I apologize. If you could work with Mark on that, and then we can, uh, send it over to them for their legal and management to look at.
And all the other requirements would be in there, right? That was discussed in terms of landscaping and fencing and all that?
You could add, you can add conditions, right, to the ordinance?
We just want them to be similar to the others that we've, we've been...
Well, yeah, this one is a little different because of that, that street to get to the project. So you could approve it and add a condition number four, that there's an agreement on a, on a road maintenance...
Right, right, right.
Subject to a road maintenance...
So we have a motion to table, right?
Correct.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Continuing on to item 10F, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to abandon and vacate the south 18 feet of an existing 65-foot shared parking and access easement being 0.12 acres out of lot three, coastal subdivision located at 6102 West Expressway 83, applicant Tremonti Investments, planning and development.
Yeah, so this is the, the project in the works at the northwest corner of Dilworth and Expressway 83, uh, just east of the Starbucks that is under construction. And so as you can see, there's a commercial plaza, uh, proposed in the, in the north end and in a, a commercial building at the southeast corner, and they're requesting for the access easement to be reduced so that it can be used for buildings. And the subdivision engineer has no objections, Starbucks has no objections, engineering is, has approved it, it's just, uh, this will help this project.
If I can get...
Go forward.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, let's get Mark to be the guy.
In order to abandoning and vacating the south 18 feet of the existing 60-foot shared parking and access easement, described as a .12 acre, 5,384 square foot out of lot three coastal subdivision, located at 6102 West Expressway 83.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Go, Mike.
Yeah, motion.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item 10G, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat of the proposed replat of lot 12, block one, Clift Edition and lot two, block two, Mason subdivision, and consideration of a variance to the required park fees located at the northeast corner of 13th Street and East Crockett Avenue, applicant Andy Bigstall, planning and development.
So this is a replat, that there's an existing house, but they have excess property, so they're, they're doing a replat so that they can sell the, the excess property, but because there's a house in one of the lots, they're asking for, to pay the park fee for only one lot instead of both lots, since there's already a house in, in, in one of the lots of the two, of the replat. So it's only, only one lot is gonna impact the park system, not both lots, because there's, there's already a house on the, on the east, east lot.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 10H, consideration and possible action to authorize the environmental health director to purchase a vehicle via TIPS USA to replace unit 130, which was assigned to an animal control officer, health department.
What's TIPS USA?
It's a co-op, similar to Bi Board.
Okay, is there a motion?
I have a question. Is this the best option? Did you check others, other tips?
Uh, I worked with Public Works to get the quote.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner's Christopher Torres, Public Works Director for the record. Uh, yes, sir, we actually do go out for other quotes, but, uh, for the most part, uh, a co-op quote does a competitive bidding for us. What a co-op does, they, they get all these quotes from different companies, and then they provide us with the best, uh, pricing.
So you just rely on the co-op and that's it?
No, sir, we, we do look at other quotes as well.
Okay.
And then also, also the availability, right? So the one that, if this gets approved, um, then we will place the order and we will get it, uh, mid-February versus to where if we go with others that are not in the co-op, could take anywhere six to 18, uh, months.
Okay, thank you. Six to 18 months to get the truck?
Yes, sir.
Not this, huh? Yeah, no, I get that, but other places? You just go to, well, I was gonna call it bogus, but same's, right?
I know, I, I still am wondering why, but, uh, that just doesn't happen, and they don't, they're not part of it, right?
Same's?
Now they are.
They, they just became, uh, part of TIPS, which is a co-op as well.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so we've been working with them as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the thing is that this, this type of truck, it's a work truck, right? So they, they don't build these, you know, um, all the time, they, they build the regular trucks that, you know, uh, civilians, uh, use, um, like, you know, Mr. Perez and Mr. Lopez, right? But, uh, yeah, these are work trucks that are...
Mine's a work truck, sir. It does work.
Yeah, no, these are just plain trucks, right?
You're gonna be a civilian, I'll get it.
Yeah, it, it's a plain truck, it's a white truck, it's, it's got no, all these fancy buttons and everything, so, yeah, they, they don't build those all the time.
Motion approved.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 10I, consideration and possible action regarding a request from Candlewood Suites to allow for an extension of time for additional field work for the hotel, hotel audit finance department.
It's you, Robert.
Robert? I didn't see him for a second, I thought he ran.
I have a question. I've never seen the word "fieldwork" outside of agriculture. What does that mean?
Yeah, sorry, when, when an auditor goes out in the field, they, they call it "fieldwork."
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, it's an audit terminology. So, uh, the first one is, so the Hilton Garden Inn, um, they are currently going, undergoing an audit, hotel audit, um, for...
Candlewood or?
We're on I, Candlewood.
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 So, uh, the Candlewood is also going under audit, and they're requesting, uh, more time, um, and, uh, asking if the city could pay for the travel, uh, costs for the auditors to come back down and, and relook at some of the work because they had some discrepancies that they had a dispute with, um, so... So.
Okay, so is Candlewood asking for more time or the auditor is?
Candlewood.
And why would we have to pay for their audit?
So my suggestion is if they want the travel to come down, that they would have to pay for the audit or the travel to come back down, because they've already come down once. And so if they want them to come back, we're suggesting that the hotel pay that for them to come back.
Seems like a little brainer.
Yeah, I agree. Motion to approve. The extension subject to them paying all the cost. Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten J, consideration and possible action regarding a request from Hilton Garden Inn for alternatives regarding Hotel Motel Audit Scope Finance.
This one is also for the Hotel Motel Audit. They have an issue or a glitch in their system where they couldn't pull all of their folios to provide it to the auditor. So they are trying to work out a case so where they can recover that information. But, so they are asking for additional, there are like five options that they were going to go, that they're requesting in their, let me go through the options.
So they're requesting more time?
Yeah. This one, so I was looking at this one and this one has, oh, shoot.
Four options.
Four, yeah, four different options. But since this is kind of more of a unique situation, I was wondering, and it's for Mark, maybe this can be something delegated to Gabe to.
Yeah, I mean, the obligation to pay state, to pay taxes is something that's established by state law. And so I think it would be appropriate to direct the city manager to conduct some discussions with these folks, how they can meet their commitments. But we can try to work with them to the extent we can under the law.
I would like to just remind everybody that we had the issue with COVID and prior to May of 2023, we had a lot of men and women in uniform. All right? So that could be an issue to where they can balance things out. People are saying the occupancy was there, but the taxes weren't there.
That is actually one of the disputes that they're, the hotel is saying that at that time there was a lot of exemptions because of those days.
Because right after, what is it, the lifting of Title forty-one, forty-two? Worst week of my life.
And they do have that documentation. It's just the folios that they have on their platform. That glitch, they could not provide those because they, I guess there was a corruption.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. On what is referring to on the glitch, it's, well, let me go back. It's a PMS system or property management system. We went from a PMS system called ONQ to a new one called PEP. That happened in September of twenty-three. So one of the things that Hilton told us was that we'd be able to retrieve all the archives in the old system from our PEP system. But the glitch, which is Hilton worldwide right now, so anybody that's converting right now to the new system is running into that same problem where we can't retrieve any of the information anymore until they fix that glitch. There is an open ticket with Hilton. And not just, again, it's just not our hotel, but it's every hotel in the Hilton portfolio. So that's why we can't get into it.
And so, Mark, what do you want this to read?
Direct the city manager to have some more discussions with them, to try to work it out in a way that still meets all the legal requirements and bring it back.
I think the only question, the only thing I wanna say is that in 2020 to 2024 even, we started with the nurses, as you guys are aware, which filled my hotel for the first year due to COVID. Then after that, we took on the military, which in any given day did about one hundred and twenty-five rooms a night, almost my entire hotel for the, even, they're still in my hotel today, just not the full ninety-five, ninety-six percent that we used to have. But they're still actually in-house, up to maybe five to ten rooms a day.
Hilton is still working on the glitch, right?
They're still working on the glitch. I don't know where we're at with it because the last time, we checked last week, it's still, they haven't been able to resolve it.
But it's possible they could in the next month or two.
I.
We don't know.
Right. That's the unknown. And that's why I was trying to ask that we get those waived and if there's any consideration that, you know, look at 2024 or audit me in two years versus the four, which is required by the law, you know, and we'd be willing to do that as well.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow our city manager, Gabe Gonzalez, to work with the staff at the Hilton Garden Inn to solve this issue with the computer glitches.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Continuing on to item eleven, board appointments. Specifically, appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment